It is seven o'clock. I am going to go ahead and get started. So, good evening and welcome to the March first, two thousand and twenty-one work session and committee meeting of the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Board of School Directors. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. The opinion expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Happer Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Happer Horsham School District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Riker, could we please have roll call?
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, Jen Wilson.
Yeah.
Dave Brown. Marion McCouch.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
Here.
Mark Coombs. Tara Connor Halston.
Here.
Susan Hunzinger Hoff.
I'm here.
Teresa Brown.
Here.
And Jim Greenhall.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, so tonight we have a couple of presentations. The first presentation we have is from the high school. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Williams.
Good evening. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board and the school district community. We have a presentation this evening. I'm joined by Mr. John Magory, who's one of our English teachers here at the high school. I'm going to actually share that presentation. And if you could, if you could, just give me the thumbs up to ensure when you see it. That would help a great deal.
Yep, we can see.
Okay, perfect. So, um, one of the things that we want to do here at the high school based on, on, on our equity goals, our equity work, is talk to you a little bit about engaging high school students differently that has happened in the past. So with this particular presentation, we're going to talk through some of the things that are happening at the high school and some things that we're really, really excited about. I have Mr. Legori here who's going to share some things that are happening at the classroom level. And then we're going to give some insight and perspective based on what is happening at the building level and our approach to this particular work. So you know better than anybody else what Happer Horsham High School enrollment looks like, okay? What I want to do is give you just a little bit of historical because I was here. As a high school student at Happer Horsham High School, the second class to go through our new building, this is what it looked like in nineteen ninety-three, my graduating year. When I came back in two thousand and five as the building principal, this is what it looked like. So there's been a steady increase and shift in our demographics over time. So with that in mind, one of the things that we want to do is we need to be more mindful of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Now, this is part of our strategic plan, our comprehensive goals, and you'd be hard pressed to find a school district anywhere where these are not key initiatives and items and, and, and goal items. So what we're going to actually focus on is the importance of voice, right? I talk all the time about student voice. For those of you who know me and talk to my kids, I'm a huge proponent of student voice. And we believe that different voices matter. So with that in mind, we're actually going to talk through three very key things. I'm going to kick it off first with Mr. Legori, who's going to talk to you about this second one in terms of the diverse perspectives and what it looks like in the classroom environment. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Magory so that he can share with you what has occurred in his classroom.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for having me. Can you hear me? Coolio, just wanted to make sure we're ready to go. So I wanted to share my lessons with you regarding Amanda Gorman. And, you know, ultimately, my goal was establishing student voice through cultural proficiency and relevancy. The fact of the matter is, our American lit curriculum needs an infusion of diversity. And, you know, ultimately, as a student at Temple University, as an undergrad and grad school student, you know, I had a very distinct memory of being an eighteen-year-old freshman, being in a class called American Ethnicity and being the only Caucasian student in that class. And, you know, that kind of shaped my mentality, right, to be on that side, you know? And ultimately, throughout my career at Happer Horsham, which started in nineteen ninety-nine, you know, I'm always trying to make sure my marginalized voices are heard. All right, Dennis, next slide, please. So ultimately, you know, my job is I want to maximize the moment, right? So I will be a hundred percent honest with you. I'm a really sentimental guy. And so, you know, this is the end of the semester. This is January, okay? And my students and I have been through a bit of a crucible, you know? We started the year fully remote. We kind of snuck back in. We had a little brief snippet there in November where we were together. And then we were remote again. And so personally, I'm looking for a way to go into January and to end my semester in as memorable a way as I can, okay? And so if you're like me, like December twenty twenty, Amanda Gorman is not on your radar, okay? I'll be straight up honest with you, right? But, you know, as I'm trying to search for how I want to close out my semester, obviously Amanda Gorman, you know, is on the national scene. We find out she's our National Youth Poet Laureate, age twenty-two. And we know that we are on the cusp of our first female vice president, you know, of, of Indian and Afro-Jamaican descent. So ultimately, here's an opportunity, right? And, you know, it's a no-brainer to cash in on that at, at Happer Horsham. One of the things that, that I started to do as I was thinking about, okay, how can I do this? You know, I knew it was going to be poetry, you know, obviously. I knew we were going to do some poetry analysis. But certainly around that time, I'm starting to conceptualize everything. And, you know, Sue Vates sends out a ton of resources, right? And it was awesome. So it eventually settled on the resource from the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League. And it was seven ideas for teaching about the presidential inauguration. And certainly, you know, I had a sense of what I was going to do, but I kind of adopted that framework, all right? And that's kind of what led us here. Dennis, next slide. Thank you, sir. So ultimately, we started with the miracle of morning. And I had to give my kids sense of background, right? Like, we can't just jump into the inauguration. That's not going to work, right? Let's, let's set the table. Let's learn about who Amanda Gorman is. So I found an article on PBS.org. And it was, it was phenomenal. It had embedded video in it. So I knew we could watch the poem as well, watch Amanda deliver the poem, all right? And ultimately, we used a Collins-style writing reflection. You know, it's like a three-two-one format. I went with a three-one, three observations, one question. And like, the kids were floored because they were learning about Amanda Gorman. And ultimately, they were learning that, hey, in twenty fourteen, she was the first youth poet laureate of Los Angeles. So you do a little bit of math. I'm not a math guy. You do a little bit of math, though, and you realize that's those tenth-grade students, those kids. That's an amazing accomplishment for her. Students learn that she was by twenty seventeen, the first national youth poet laureate. You know, kids are like opening their eyes, okay, okay. Hey, they also learn that she's an activist, right? In that article, there's a little blurb where she wrote a poem about the Charlottesville-Virginia incident. And she said, tyrants fear the poet. Now that we know it, we can't blow it. We owe it to show it, not slow it. And look, that's English one oh one. You know, what do we want our students to do, right? We, words have power, right? We want them to understand that. We want them to cultivate their words. We want them to activate their word. And so, you know, ultimately, they learned a lot just from this article. And then, from a context standpoint, you know, I wanted them to understand what Gorman said. And so I included this quote at the top of their pre-reading activity, right, where they understand why she wrote this, you know? Hate crimes, hurricanes, deportations were in the headlines. But now everybody is re-examining this poem through a different lens. And that is this common lens that we all have of the pandemic. So when I put all of this together, right, I wanted that kind of as a foundational principle. And then ultimately, it was up to the kids to find some open-ended elements. Like I said, pick out three images. Why do they stand out to you? What do they need, right? Can you identify the tone, right? Because that's super duper important with Miracle of Morning. And because it connects directly to the theme. And then ultimately, I wanted to bring everybody together and talk about, you know, why it resonate with us. And the kids were really, really good about identifying those images right away. It was pretty amazing to see hopeful tone, unity with Americans coming together. And this idea of people grudging through a pandemic and coming out on the other side, as Amanda Gorman says, as the best of being. So I wanted that hopeful tone, too. When we get I love to use images, you know, very professional vibrant image of Amanda Gorman. But I wanted kids to really, for their pre-reading, I wanted them to say, hey, what, what, what can you learn about the author from this pre-reading? And, you know, she says, I'm the daughter of black writers. We're descended from freedom fighters who broke the chains and changed the world, they call me, right? And so, you know, right away, kids, what does this show you about your author here? And there they were. The kids picked up on it right away, right? She's her sense of pride, her sense of empowerment, her sense of perseverance, right? Her sense of duty and reverence, her sense of purpose. And ultimately, when we looked at, you know, this poem, you know, identity is like a universal language, right? That's a universal thing for high school students to be, you know, struggling with, or at least hopefully, in our case here, you know, it's got to be a source of strength, of power, right? And so we kind of use this. With the, the background, I also used a, a video so they could see this interview with Amanda Gorman. And, you know, they had a lot of takeaways with this. They learned that she had a speech impediment really up until college, like through college. And that to get over that speech impediment, she watched Hamilton and she found the song in Hamilton, Aaron Burr, Sir. And she repeated it over and over and over again in order to try to, you know, take a proactive approach and curtail her speech impediment. With the hill we climb, again, I wanted the kids to do the legwork. Like, I didn't want any canned questions, right? I didn't want to have to, you know, guide them in a direction. I wanted them to inform themselves based on what they saw. So questions like, what's the most powerful piece of imagery, right? Was this message effective? Why or why not? And then certainly comparing and contrasting with miracles since we had, you know, seen Miracle earlier in the week. And then ultimately, when it came down to it, right, kids saw Amanda Gorman in a very powerful light. They, they saw quotes like, "A country committed to all cultures, colors, characters, and conditions of man," right? This idea of equality. They saw togetherness. We lay down our arms so we can reach out our arms to one another. We seek harm to none, harmony for all. And lastly, they saw a call to action, right? We will not march back to what was, but move to what shall be. A country that is bruised but whole, benevolent but bold, fierce and free. And so all of that activated, you know, with the students and then leading it up to them after that point and saying, hey, guys, it's your turn, your call. Write your own inaugural poem illustrating your message to America or your vision of America. Very important to get their voices in there. Next slide will be the last slide. Thank you very much for your time, ladies and gentlemen. This is Amanda Gorman's roar. And I was like, hey, how do I wrap up this school year? This is the day before records day when I did this lesson. And I, I came back to Amanda Gorman because of this idea of the speech impediment. It was a good springboard for us to kind of wrap it up. And then I could usher the kids, you know, I want to usher the kids into semester two in a positive light. So at any rate, you know, this presentation roar is about her audition for The Lion King. It's from twenty seventeen. It's a group called The Moth, which is a nonprofit group where they're dedicated to the art and craft of storytelling. The theme was my big break, as I said. Very relatable video because she talks about sibling rivalry. You know, parents who embarrass you, feeling intimidated, alienated, disappointed. She's humorously self-deprecating, you know? And she doesn't get the part, but she is completely undaunted. And he says, you know, I'm quote, loud and proud in front of a crowd on a stage. And the thing that was so profound for the students with this video is that her speech impediment in twenty seventeen is pronoun. Like, it is distractingly pronoun. And I wanted to use that as a way to say, hey, guys, we've seen Amanda Gorman at her best. She read for the inauguration as a twenty-two-year-old, right? We've seen her with Miracle of Morning. And now here we see her. And while she presents well, right, she had a very profound speech impediment. And so I use that as an opportunity for the kids to kind of say, hey, guys, keeping that growth mindset. I wanted to, to inspire them to be proactive, just like Amanda Gorman, you know, and take initiative. So I kind of asked them, hey, for their, their last prompt of the year, you know, what's one of your weaknesses? What's one of your foibles that, that you want to overcome moving into semester two, to kind of give them a focus? So again, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Legori. I certainly appreciate what you're doing in the classroom. So Mr. Legori talked a little bit about number two. I'm just going to hit numbers one and three for you very briefly, just so you can get an understanding or, or, or some perspective in terms of what we are doing at the high school level from a building perspective. So he focused on number two. The rest of this will focus on numbers one and number three. So with anything, the question is, what's your foundation? What's your why? Why are we engaging in this particular work at this particular time at the high school? And what's the work that I'm talking about, I'm going to share with you very briefly regarding our student voice and the reason why student voices actually matter. So for us, our foundation, our why, if you think back to the spring of twenty twenty and all of the things that occurred in this country, from the social justice, social injustice, and the social unrest that occurred in this country, it was something that our students had to deal with and had to wrestle with. And unfortunately, really didn't necessarily have an outlet. So we're dealing with this social unrest at a time where kids are at home because of COVID. And this would be a time we would traditionally have different kind of dialogue and conversations with our students, and that just wasn't available. So when you think back to your strategic plan and, and you have all these plans in place and your comprehensive plan, and how are, how are we going to engage in these initiatives? And the spring of twenty twenty truly, as Mike Tyson said, everybody has a plan until they get punched in the mouth. That social unrest in this country and really around the world punched every school in the mouth, right? When you're talking about high school students, those who have the ability to come in and share information and really kind of speak their feelings and their thoughts and what they're thinking on particular issues, that wasn't necessarily available. When you take a look at Ed Week, a national publication, Education Week, they did a survey in August of twenty twenty. We found this survey very interesting. The question was, how effective are schools at bridging equity gaps and promoting equity? If you look at the, the, the data prior to the spring, right, before what happened in the spring with the deaths of, of, of some individuals across the country, and then you look at late August, look at that change, whether schools were effective or ineffective, those, those issues that occurred really kind of changed people's opinion. And these are all teachers. You're across the country. This is a national survey. At the same time, look at the second slide. Are teachers prepared to do equity and cultural proficiency work? And based on this information, you can see almost sixty percent believe that they haven't necessarily had the training or the resources, right? So we've done a really, really good job at Happer Horsham, but we still know that there are gaps, there are holes, there are things that we need to do to improve. So enter the end of twenty twenty, right, the last week of school. And in fact, this occurred at our, at the, the high school end of year, my end-of-year faculty meeting. I had purchased two books. I had purchased How to Be an Anti-Racist by Dr. Kendi, and I purchased Not Light But Fire by Matthew Kay. Matthew Kay is a local boy. He's a Philadelphia guy. He teaches in Philadelphia right now. He wrote this book in two thousand and eighteen, and its focus is around how to teach teachers to have meaningful conversations about race in the classroom. When he wrote this book in two thousand and eighteen, he had no idea that it was going to blow up the way that it did based on the things that have occurred in this country. And this has become one of the most highly sought-after books over the last twelve months across the country. Interestingly, one of my teachers at our faculty meeting said, you know, we should do a book study on this book. Okay, let's do it. We all know in education, as administrators, any administrator will tell you, most great ideas come from teachers and from students, right? So we just jump on and try to make it work. So a teacher said, let's do a book study. So we had about twenty-five teachers do a book study this summer. At the same time, the HATF had contracted with Matthew Kay to deliver professional development. So in August, when we returned to school for our August professional development, I had a hundred and thirty high school teachers and thirty support staff participate in a half-day professional development session with Matthew Kay. Then HATF came to the rescue again and contracted with Matthew Kay to create a student side of things. So what we did, what we actually created was a campaign called Our Voices Matter. And I will tell you, this has been a game changer. So when you think about what really matters, are you providing equitable experiences for all students at Happer Horsham High School? And these are some of the questions that we're asking ourselves around discipline, around the aesthetics of the building, around the resources that we have. And then how do we handle issues of discrimination, bigotry based on race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, and all of those things, right? So those things matter. Here's who's involved. It's a diverse group. This isn't just an administrative team. This isn't just teachers. This is a collaborative group. We have thirty-one students involved and fifteen teachers. And those students come from some of our affinity groups here at the high school. You can see the list of, of, of groups and clubs and activities that we have at the high school. And those students all came from those groups. And it's an opportunity for those students to kind of share what their thoughts, their opinions, and how things are going at Happer Horsham. Most importantly, we are a customer service organization, and it should be, what are we doing well? What are we not doing so well? How can we improve, right? And those have been some of the conversations. So we've divided things up into three subcommittees. I have two teachers who are facilitating each committee. We're addressing issues of discipline, guidance, and procedures. And it's interesting to even see kids start to look at and talk about resources and curriculum, the voices that they would like to see, the voices that they would like to hear. So on your screen, you can see this is some of the dialogues that we've had to date, right? Everything again from discipline to what our building looks like, to even clothing guidelines. And what I'm going to share with you next is really just a quick snapshot of a couple of our students, thirty seconds, who have shared in one of our teachers. So you're going to hear from two students and one teacher about what this initiative and what this campaign of Our Voices Matter actually means to them in their own words.
Hi, I'm Ibi. I'm a junior at Happer Horsham, and I'm in the Procedures and Guidelines Group for Our Voices Matter. It's a nice process to have an actual group of people willing to listen to me. It's less of a student opinion group and more of a community discussion. It's probably one of the most productive groups I've been in in like a long time. For the Procedures and Guidelines, we've mostly talked about dress code and how that affects people of color in classes. And actually had time to address my concerns without being, you know, told to just, you know, bring it up later. And I'm pretty happy with that.
You're here from another student.
Hi, my name is Metei, and I'm a senior part of Our Voices Matter. Being in Our Voices Matter has been very helpful and very eye-opening. It gives students the opportunity to speak up without feeling like they're being ridiculed. In the group as a whole, the changes we are looking forward to make are stronger details in discipline, guidelines, and rules for students. But also making sure that the teacher-to-student relationship is comfortable enough for both parties to talk about the uncomfortable things. This group is very different from the groups that I've been in, and I'm looking forward to the changes that we make.
And now you're here for one of our teachers.
Hi, Maya Goldberg. I'm a social studies teacher at the high school, and I'm the faculty sponsor for Students for Social Justice. The best thing about Our Voices Matter is that it's a program that takes into consideration the perspective and the experience and the voice of students in our building. They have insight about what goes on in our schools in a way that adults just can't see. So when you combine their perspective with our experience and our power to make change, we can make our school a more inclusive place.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, voices matter. Our students, their opinions, their perspectives, their beliefs, those things are critical, especially in the classroom. But they're also critical for us as administrators to be able to move forward and make change, positive change, to create value-added opportunities, and more importantly, to have a significant impact. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you so much for your time. And more importantly, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Principal Williams and Mr. Legori. That was very informative, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing there. And up next, I believe we have Mr. Glaze from Hollowell.
Yes, very good. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Williams, for leading this very important work. Great way to get us started tonight. So nice to be able to be with all of you tonight. I have a couple of individuals that I want to introduce to you and talk to you a little bit about, and I'm going to have them present to you. The first is our new specialized learning support teacher. Her name is Melissa Breen. The, this particular program is a brand-new program for our school district. It is designed for our, some of our younger learners to better understand and manage their own emotions, their reactions, the ways in which they interact with others, and in doing so, get themselves, as you'll see in the video, ready to learn and be accessible to the instruction. And I'm just going to brag a little on Melissa. Melissa is new in this position, but she is not new to us. She began as a personal care assistant in our school district, furthered her education, and is in this position right now. And she is doing an absolutely amazing job. So she's going to present to you in a moment. And we also have with us Valerie Slot. Val Slot is our school counselor. Many of you, I think, already know her. She, she, on a personal level, she's in my personal Mount Rushmore of the kindest people that you'll ever meet in your life. And the great thing about what she does, many think, but one of the great things that she does is that she takes the work in the program that Melissa's going to describe, and she's able to spread it out amongst various classes. Because as we know, great work that gets done and benefits students can benefit all. And so you're going to see in just a moment, you're going to see a PowerPoint presentation. There's going to be a little bit of a song that you're going to learn. It's going to stick in your head for days. So you're welcome with that. And, and then after you get the video, that's going to be a nice opportunity to also hear directly from the children of our school. So I'm really proud of these two individuals that we have here tonight, and of course, the students in our school. So without further ado, Melissa, I'm going to let you take it over.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Thank you for all those kind words. I am very excited to be here with Val and get to share this with you. We're having it started.
Hi, yeah, and, yeah, and I, I too, very happy to be here, Steve. Thank you for the kind words, like Melissa said. And, and Dennis and John, beautiful presentation of the work that you're doing at the, at the high school. Thanks for having us here today to share.
Valerie, you were able to see the presentation?
Yep, I can see it.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and get started and just introduce myself. Steve gave me a wonderful opening. I am new to this position. And I have been in, this is my sixth year at Happer Horsham. And I did start as a personal care assistant in Val's room, actually, which is where I came upon the curriculum, so the regulation, and I used it with a student I was working with, and it's just been growing ever since. And Val has been getting out there all the classrooms, and we are very, very excited to have this platform to kind of share it, hoping that maybe others will find interest because we have seen it make a tremendous difference for students with all different, at all different levels of emotional regulation. Val, did you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll?
So, as Steve said, I'm Val Slot. I'm the school counselor in Hollowell. I'm in the district in a little over thirty years. It has been a pleasure and it's been an honor. And working, and I'm just so grateful to the school board and the administration for supporting all these amazing programs for kids. And I am grateful that Melissa and I can work together and present the Zones of Regulation program to our students. It has really made a big difference, and we're excited to tell you more about it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So as Steve said, we're going to play a song for you. And, um, this is a song that we, I use in my room all the time. It's just kind of to get the kids awake. And even now, maybe everybody's sitting at home, and you're just listening and listening and listening. And perhaps this will wake you up a little bit and get you thinking about your zone.
Are you happy? Are you sad? Are you excited? Are you mad? Are you anxious? Are you glad? Let's talk about the sounds of regulation. Are you happy? Are you sad? Are you excited? Are you mad? Are you anxious? Are you glad? Let's talk about the sounds of regulation. When I'm feeling tired or a little sad too, what color am I? Blue. Are you happy? Are you sad? Are you excited? Are you mad? Are you anxious? Are you glad? Let's talk about the sounds of regulation. When I'm feeling angry, no more to be said, what color am I? Red. Are you happy? Are you sad? Are you excited? Are you mad? Are you anxious? Are you glad? Let's talk about the sounds of regulation.
Okay. I'm going to stop at that. Just so you get the idea of the song. Okay. All right. So that's just something that we play for the younger kids. Obviously, that is something that probably won't go over as well with older students, but that's okay because the Zones of Regulation is very adaptable for any age, even as adults. I have five staff members in my room, and they find themselves using it at home sometimes, just the language, because it helps explain how we feel. And the Zones of Regulation is a complete social emotional learning curriculum created to teach children self-regulation and emotional control. It's often taught in schools or therapy settings, but parents can teach the Zones of Regulation at home as well. There is information on that, which we will share. The skills taught throughout the Zones of Regulation is like identifying your emotions, self-regulation, identifying triggers. And these are just some of the things that they go over. It teaches a variety of social emotional skills to children, starting with early emotional skills, which would be your kindergarten classrooms. And we do have kindergarten classrooms using it. You'll see that in the video we're going to share. And advances to self-regulation and navigating social situations. Everything you need to do is in this curriculum per skill. However, it is also easily navigated in that you can pull from it what you need for your students. So it's not to be overwhelmed by it. I think sometimes you will hear curriculum, and teachers, you know, know they're overwhelmed. Everyone's overwhelmed at the moment with the pandemic and learning, but this is something that is easily implemented and makes a lot of a difference for kids.
And there are a number of goals of the Zones curriculum. And it's like Melissa was saying, it's about identifying feelings and also describes your level of alertness. The Zones are divided into colors. It's the blue, green, yellow, and red. And there are emotions that go along with each of the zones. So for example, let's say someone is feeling a little tired. They may express, okay, I'm in the blue zone. And that's where it combines identifying emotions with also identifying our levels of alertness. Another goal is for the kids to have effective tools that they can use for regulation. And we're going to get just talked about some of the tools the kids are learning. The kids also learn to problem solve for positive solutions and understand how their behaviors influence others' thoughts and feelings. And always with the goal to move toward self-regulation, as you'll see in the next slide.
A key component to self-regulation is triggers. And this is something that I found extremely helpful in my classroom. Keep in mind, my children are in my room specifically who get direct instruction in emotional regulation. And one of the stepping stones to emotional regulation is to understand how you feel and why you feel that way. I think all of us can identify with figuring that out over the years. You know how to step away. You know what could possibly make you upset. When you have little people that don't know how to regulate those feelings, they need to understand why they have them and know when they're coming at them. And that, this has proven very successful in my classroom. Every student has a chart that looks just like this, and they decide what makes them upset. And the more aware they've become of that, they can now use other tools for when those things arise. So what makes me upset and what zone does it put me in? And these are the charts. I'm sorry, Val. These are some of the charts that Val's going to explain that help children put those emotions somewhere and make sense of them.
So each of the charts looks a little different. And at the same time, each one shows the four zones that we teach the kids about. And what's really nice is it can be tailored to kids' individual interests, something that sparks their attention, something that's easily relatable. And as we get to know the kids, we get to know their interests and what visuals are helpful for each of the kids. And one thing I really like about the program is that the kids learn that it's very individual, that what I'm feeling about a situation may be different than what Melissa's feeling or may be different than what one of the students are feeling or another one of the adults. And the tools that I use to help myself regulate could be different than the tools someone else uses. So the kids wind up having a lot of voice in this and a lot of opportunity to choose what works for them. So these are some of the visuals that we might use in our classrooms. What's really nice also is that it's very adaptable, as Melissa was saying, to middle school and high school. And so the visuals might look a lot different. And Melissa pulled this from the Zones of Regulation website. And you can see, we'll just kind of scroll through. You can see that there's many different ways to represent this depending on the group that you're working with. And the ideas of the Zones are, like we were saying, are adaptable for all of us. When we check in with the kids on like what zone are you in, how are you feeling? As the adults, we also are sharing how we're feeling and that, yes, we all have a wide range of emotions, and all of our emotions are okay. And we figure out, is this what I need in this moment? Do I need to develop? Do I need a tool right now? Am I in a place where I'm available and I'm ready for what we're doing? Do I need to use one of my tools? So many different ways we can represent the Zones.
Thanks, Valerie. Yes, the adaptability is wonderful. I think, again, you see the colors. It might make someone think that it's for younger children. It really can be for everybody. And the key is not to make children focus on fully their emotions, but rather to understand them so they can move on and not get stuck in that emotional place. Because we have these feelings all day long, and that is one of the things that we teach. And self-regulation in the classroom. It starts with just simply identifying those four zones. That's the first piece. You learn the zones, and then you start matching your feelings to those zones. The pictures that are up on the screen right now are my classroom. This may not be something that would be quite as elaborate in a Gen Ed classroom, but for me, that's our focus. So we have regulation station, but you can see there's a cart. It's full of tools. The children learn these tools. Behind the door is a room where they can go to calm down when they're very angry. And then you see the plate, such as a check-in, that they can walk up to at any time and clip and say, this is where I'm at. And they all have two clips, because you can be in more than ones at a time. And we teach them that even as adults, we feel these things all day long, and that's fine. And you may not be out of that blue zone at all in a day because you're just tired or sick the entire day. But you learn how to stay, you know, in the green zone as well and do what you have to do, you know, while you're not feeling rather tired. Or pick a tool, I'm tired, I need to go for a walk. And here is the other side of this self-regulation station bulletin board discusses size of my problem, which is helping, which is another important tool, which would be in the toolbox. And we'll discuss that in a minute. The students create their own toolbox. So once they learn their emotions, they learn their triggers, then it's time to start saying, well, when I feel like I am in the red zone or the yellow zone, what can I do? How can I stop myself from flipping my lid and not having any control? And then they learn these tools, and then they start putting them in their toolbox. The one that's on the screen is one that is, that's what is used in my classroom. And I know that there are some other teachers, Gen Ed teachers, that are looking to use this because it's a constant reminder, and it's right there. So they take personal investment in what they pick because like Val said, what works for me may not work for someone else. And that's why they learn what works for them. And that is a very important step in getting to self-regulation.
So well, here, one of the self-regulation tools that Melissa just mentioned, which is called Size of the Problem. And there are times that there may be something that on the surface seems like a small problem, and the reaction that we're seeing seems like it's a huge problem. So the kids learn to identify, what is it that, I'm having a big reaction to something? I'm in the yellow zone where I'm getting nervous, starting to feel a little out of control. Or I'm in the red zone where my brain and body feel really out of control. Maybe I'm extremely angry. Maybe I'm just feeling out of control. And what is it about? Have I lost my pencil and I'm having a big reaction? And we take a look at, when we're in a calm place, we take a look at, well, what size of a problem is losing my pencil? Is this something that we can easily solve? And is my reaction, when I'm having a big emotional reaction, I'm extremely angry, and it's from losing my pencil, is my problem matching the size of my reaction? And so, and kids learn how to get themselves back into what we call the green zone, where we're feeling more safe and calm so that we can problem solve. So this is just, you know, one of the many tools that the kids have in their toolbox.
Thank you, Val. Yes, that is an essential part of my program, which is the specialized learning support. I find on a daily basis, we use, while we're learning to regulate, what size is this problem? And I like that Val mentioned, we do that learning when they're calm. And that helps them grasp the concept. And then when they're upset, you try to give them the guidance to get to that on their own. And then eventually it shifts, and then they know how to do it on their own. Because they recognize that, yes, this is a tiny problem, and this is something I can solve. Because each level of problems has their own solutions or tools that you would use. So if it's a problem that is actually a little out of their control, they can ask for help. They learn these things. The Zones in Action is exactly what happens in my room every single day. And it is the success to the SLS program. There are other components to it, but the core is the Zones of Regulation. And my program is not the only place something like this would be used. It is something that can be used, like I said, in any classroom, which is why we're so excited to get to share it, because it makes a big difference. I can remember years ago when we were using clip charts, and it would give anxiety to children because they were nervous that they clipped down, and it wasn't giving them the tools to fix it the next time. And the Zones gives them those tools. It makes them self-aware. We cannot help children make better choices if they don't learn about themselves. And that is a tool for life, which is exciting to be able to give children this gift. The video we're about to show was recorded at Hollowell, and it is in my room and other general education classrooms. I am very proud of my staff, of my students, of everyone at Hollowell that is using this because they are doing an amazing job with it, and I'm glad that they got to be part of something so important. I'll go ahead and show that video. The Zones of Regulation is actually a curriculum. It's all in here. And it is a way to teach children self-regulation and learn to solve problems, have their problems, you know, solved in a way that their reactions match. Blue zone is when you're feeling sad, you're slow-moving, you might be tired or sick. You have green, which is, I'm ready to learn, I'm calm, I'm where I should be.
I'm kind of in the yellow zone too, which is the yellow end, because I'm kind of happy and kind of nervous. Let's see, when my mom and dad see this.
We teach the children that it is okay to be in all of these zones every day. It happens for all of us, even as adults. And as adults, we have a hard time sometimes bringing ourselves down. But we learn strategies like walking away and pausing. That's a common strategy of, you know, stop and think before you react. And these are the things we're giving them because then they can regulate on their own without being, you know, maybe reprimanded before understanding how to make it better the next time.
Well, I see the Zones of Regulation helping the students immensely. And with the language of the Zones of Regulation has helped them completely change that around. They're able to understand their emotions and use their toolboxes to basically regulate themselves without prompts, mostly. So I think it's amazing, actually. Just to see them be able to do it on their own now, it's just, it's great.
It's common to have desk labels with your name. This is another kind of label, and it just gives them the colors. So this helps them to say, okay, how did that activity make me feel? Or how did that direction make me feel? And what can I do with it if it's not making me feel okay? And then they learn. And we have all those tools. And we call them tools because they're used to get back to that green zone.
There's, it has little tools. It has like press pause, raise mistakes, stretch things. Then lazy breathing is for breathe out, breathe in, and go around it.
We also talk about size of the problem and size of the reaction. And we encourage the kids to kind of take a look at, well, what is the size of this problem? Is my reaction matching the size of the problem? And it goes from a one, a tiny problem, all the way up to an emergency and what we might be feeling. And then we can take a look at, all right, what size was this problem? Did my reaction match that size?
The year has not been a standard year, and there has been a lot of up and down. But another key component to the Zones of Regulation is just being flexible, right? We have to make a new plan, and how do we do that? Because sometimes if something doesn't match, it might put us in the yellow zone, and we can't regulate to move past it. So it helps them be flexible. So that year being up and down, this gives them the tools to handle that.
Excuse this interruption. With the continued wet conditions outside, we're going to have indoor recess today.
What zone are you in? The announcement changer zone?
Yes. It's still in yellow.
Teacher can check in and say, how did everybody feel about that new activity? Just simply, what zone does it put you in? Think you're okay with it? Do you think you're worried? If you're worried, we can talk about it and then have it on a whiteboard and lift it up. And the other wonderful part about this is it can be adapted to any age.
I feel like kids have taken ownership of this and ownership of their emotions and of their tools. And not, and being able to select for themselves. I mean, sometimes with a prompt, what zone are you in? What might you need at this moment? The kids then can select that for themselves. And I feel like with that ownership of my own feelings, my own choices, the kids become invested and are kind of empowered to be able to use their tools.
They help me very much. Certainly, they do.
Okay. So that was our proud little video and, you know, getting to see the Zones in action in various classroom settings. And the kids taking ownership of their tools. And they understand it completely, and it's great to see. If this is something, you know, obviously, we want to spread this around. So there will be a pamphlet posted. It's in this PowerPoint, but then we're going to try to get it somewhere on the district website. So when you click it, you can go directly to, instead of having to search it out, there are all different articles on here, most of them coming directly from the Zones of Regulation website, which is directed to social thinking, and they have so many resources for all ages. It's wonderful. And a lot of time, they'll even offer free webinars. And I find their stuff tremendously useful in the classroom. You can see on here different tools for the classroom, using the Zones at home. The teaching, which is the teaching tools, the free handouts, if you wanted to get started with the chart and telling your classroom or parents. And this is an interview with the woman who actually created the Zones of Regulation. And this is our song, fun song we played for you. And then the Zones of Regulation, creating a Zones check-in area at home. Since we're doing so many things at home and everything that's been going on, the creator of the program, of the curriculum, actually did a video for parents at home. So that is what we have. Again, I cannot say thank you enough for this opportunity to share this. and, and make awareness everywhere. And I hope that somebody, you know, finds this intriguing and does some more research. Thank you for having us.
And if I could just real quick, a follow-up and just say, thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Val. Thank you to our teachers and our children. I hope that you learned a lot tonight, not the least of which is that I'm a mean principal that keeps kids in for indoor recess. And, but no, I just want to thank everyone doing great work. And I think my hope is that what you saw tonight also dovetails some of our comprehensive plan goals as it relates to equity, as it relates to our discipline practices. If you think about what we're doing here, we are equipping children to regulate, to better manage their emotions in a proactive manner, as opposed to a reactive manner that leads to a lot of discipline practices. So my hope is that you're seeing things that really do dovetail some of the major concepts and themes that we've been talking about at the school.
Thank you, Mr. Glaze and Ms. Slott and Ms. Breen. That was a great presentation. And like you said, this, this work is, you know, not only important for now, but for these kids' future. And, and you know, when they grow to become, you know, older kids, they'll be able to better regulate, you know, their emotions. So it's, it's a great tool. Thank you very much for presenting that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we're going to move to Dr. Eda Slott.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by also echoing the thanks to our teachers and for presenting. Thank you to Mr. Williams and Mr. Lagory at the high school and Mr. Glaze, Ms. Breen and Ms. Slott at Halliwell for all the efforts that you are, you're doing both in school and for the presentation this evening. Certainly a joy of the job to see our students grow and our staff getting better at their craft. And both of those are examples of that. So thank you. We appreciate it. And teaching students how to respond to disappointment, like staying in for recess is important. And so, Mr. Glaze was vulnerable in sharing that moment when he had to bring the bad news to the students of Halliwell. They responded with, with resolve. So it was good. So thank you. So I have an update this evening, just a, a oral update that I'll provide. Last meeting, we provided an update on the reopening plans and reported on the recently released CDC guidance. Since then, there's been additional guidance released, including the CDC offering recommendations for ventilation and air quality in schools. And also both Chester and Delaware counties released follow-up guidance and public health metrics for schools following CDC's releasing their guidance. However, at this time, the Montgomery County Office of Public Health has not issued revised guidance. But has, they have stated their intention to follow the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidance. There has not been revised PD or Pennsylvania Department of Health guidance in the last two weeks. But there is some rumors that this guidance is being revised and will be released soon. But it has not, it has not happened to date. Also today, the governor lifted travel quarantine restrictions and relaxed some of the occupancy limits for indoor and outdoor gatherings and events. That speaks to what we've talked about here is that, that the dynamics of guidelines are changing rapidly. And so that's just in the last two weeks. We can expect additional guidance to be released and be revised in the upcoming weeks. And we will, of course, respond and react to that accordingly. Some information on our, our local numbers, the Montgomery County early, early dashboard, early warning dashboard that's released every Friday is teetered on the edge of both moderate and substantial transmission the past two weeks. It's trending in a good direction, but incident rates are right about at 100. The metric calls for the incident rates to be below 100 for consecutive weeks to put us in the moderate range, moderate level of transmission. Positivity rates have been at 5.8 and 6% the last two weeks. So while we do remain in the substantial range, we're very close to being in the moderate range. And that's a good general trend that's provided some cause for optimism, especially with the other projections that we are hearing from CHOP, but Dr. Rubin admits some projections around the late March and early April range as highlighting that time to be in one where incident rates and positivity rates are projected to be much more manageable level. And coupled with warmer weather, create a scenario where repopulating classrooms, especially K to five classrooms would make the most sense. He did warn that, you know, going back too soon or bringing back more, too, too many students too soon may result in plans having to be walked back due to transmission. But did present those, those possible dates as a range of, of optimism for perhaps some, some additional students to return in person. Per the CDC guidelines, assessing mitigation strategies within the context of the community numbers makes the most sense as they are, of course, relative to one another. This coming Monday, the eighth of, of March will mark the beginning of the first grade returning five days in person. Since our last meeting, we have surveyed preferences for first grade families, including families in the Hatter Academy in first grade. And we have been able to accommodate the wishes of all those families while still be able to operate within the guidelines. We did have some families who chose to leave the Hatter Academy, which resulted in a transition of teacher. That would also switch to the five-day in-person programming in returning to their, their home school. In addition to the first grade switch, next Friday, the cohort rotation will begin on the eighth of, of March with in-person instruction occurring on Mondays. That schedule has been communicated from principals. It's also published on the website, on the reopening page of the website for the schedule for the days, the Monday days for the cohort rotation in the upcoming weeks. Since our last meeting, we've sent three separate surveys slash questionnaire. The aforementioned first grade families survey. We also communicated an assessment of the intentions of our K-5 Hatter Academy families. And we released a questionnaire to all of our grade two through 12 families. The recent two through 12 grade questionnaire closes tomorrow at 4:00 PM. We encourage everyone's participation. As of this afternoon, we have about a 50% of our school enrollment who have responded so far, which under normal circumstances is a good response rate for questionnaire. We do hope to, to that number only increases. So we do encourage families to please complete that as we seek to gather information on preferences so that we can assess the impact of what the student in-person population would have on the distancing and the feasibility of our options to return students in person. This information will be gathered, analyzed and shared, reported to the board and public, allowing us to see the impact of potential recommendations. We'll analyze the questionnaire response data in greater detail, including seeing what the breakdown is by grade and by school. There will be, as expected, some challenges. Some of our nearby districts have returned students to in-person instruction fully, some with roughly 50% opting for fully virtual instruction. That will not be the case here in Happer-Horsham School District, based on the, the, the survey data that we are receiving. Current response trends are higher than this. And if this is maintained, it'll let us know the distancing impact on returning students. It's likely that meeting these preferences would result in less than six feet distancing. How much less would be determined by the responses, the sites, the grades, the schools and the level. But we will look to analyze that data and report it to you so that you can make an informed decision about the impact of whatever considerations we may have moving forward. We're also continuing to look at how schedules may have to be changed and what other modifications may be needed to ensure proper supervision if school, if students are spread out in non-traditional spaces in schools. Work has included, work has included looking at every instructional space, building and assessing the capacity of each space. This includes moving furniture, tape measures, measuring spaces, measure, you know, putting desks in various locations, assessing available spaces, including greater access to outdoor spaces as the weather warms. This also includes spacing considerations for processes such as arrival, dismissal and lunches, which of course, plans have to change as numbers potentially change. So we have to look at all that, all the while, while assessing enrollment trends. Just want to take a moment to speak to some of the suggestions that have been made. They're good suggestions. So I want to just speak to some of the response to that regarding suggestions that the, that students be scheduled creatively to include considering off-site options for classroom spaces. And while we do appreciate the creativity and of this approach, we want you to know that these options have been explored thoroughly. And there are a lot of reasons and complications surrounding this, this recommendation that have led to some hesitation in its final pursuit by the district and by other public schools. There's just some complications that I just want to shed some light on as to why that is more difficult than it sounds. Scheduling students in creative ways involves more than just placement of students physically. It's much more importantly involves the scheduling of services that we provide for those students. Services that as a public school, we are legally and ethically obligated to meet. Some of these services are those that we've come to expect for every student. Things like transportation, food service, safety and security protocols, everything from drills to having responses to lockdowns, intruder alerts and so forth, to having, being around adults who have been vetted with clearances. Those are, you know, services, examples of services that everyone would expect regardless of location. These in and of themselves are difficult to meet in off-site locations. But other services that are more individualized and are more student-specific are even additionally challenging. Special education services, English language learners, Title I supports, gifted supports. All of those, et cetera, are, are services that are provided by professionals who provide supports for services across multiple buildings. And so those services are, are shared by, by staff members across buildings. And as you certainly, as you spread, as you spread students out, you have to, the responsibility to, of course, meet those needs in person. For a student that would be in person, regardless of their site, the expectation would be a service would be delivered in person. All that said, we also have that same pool of professionals that are servicing kids virtually. So that, that, that group is being spread very thin. You know, from the, from the standpoint of us providing services for students, we, you know, we have literally, every single classroom has students in it with have, that have special needs. That's an inclusive approach that we should feel really proud about. It's something to point a pride for the district. We have an inclusive, inclusive classroom environment. However, delivering that comes with a complex commitment of resources and logistics and an expectation that we're not going to sacrifice that commitment to meet the needs of any student, of every student in, in, under any circumstances. So I won't in good conscience recommend a placement of any off-site setting where we wouldn't be able to do so equitably for students. And so I'd say that not as, as a, as a reason or, or an excuse. I just want to share, shed some light in the complexity of that and to also share the standard that we're going to hold ourselves to for the benefit of our students. Any change that we've had to make, we've been tasked with identifying the needs of students and the services they receive. So anytime we change a schedule, even the cohort schedule next, next Monday, for example, we have to re, re-schedule services to make sure that kids are, the services are being met in person as opposed to how they had been virtually. So in most cases, it can be done, but it's challenging. In the case with off-site spaces, it's much less feasible, feasible and much less challenging. And it's, there's, it's really the reason that we haven't and, and other public school districts have not been able to fully invest in that option to the point that it can, it can become a reality. So by no means do we ever want to close out options from ourselves. We always want to keep options open. And so, you know, we will do so, but that, that is a reality that, that we, that we're faced with. We've stated all along that our objective is to provide a safe and equitable return. And that means we bring back students whenever we bring them back and whatever pace we're bringing them back, we're bringing them back at a time when services can be met for all students. That's what we do with kindergarten. That's what we do with first grade. And we will continue that, that process to make sure that, to sure that we can meet that, meet that standard. So our upcoming plan in the, in the upcoming days is we will provide a more detailed analysis of the questionnaire responses to assess how many families prefer to send students back to in-person instruction. We'll measure against the constraints of our space and staffing challenges. There may be future surveys or questionnaires that have to follow as plans become a little bit more concrete by grade level. We did ask for people's feelings on their, on, on placements and preferences. We did come shy of asking for a solid commitment. So if when we make change, of course, we'll have to secure that commitment, much like we did for the first grade. Based on the results of the questionnaire, we'll flesh out solutions to the challenges that we see, along with others that have been identified by our Health and Safety Committee, our building principals, including how to handle issues such as lunch dismissal, supervision of students who are spread out throughout the building. We'll also continue to prioritize our youngest learners as we look to, look to find ways to return them to in-person instruction with a little greater frequency. We'll continue to identify and work on logistics for items such as tents, usable outdoor spaces, Plexiglas shields and additional or replacement furniture and how we can use our spaces more flexibly. Certainly we will welcome the warm weather in more ways than one, but certainly welcome it with the idea to have, be able to have outdoor spaces more usable, windows open more for increased air, air, air conditions and, and ventilation and other mitigation strategies. And we'll continue to expand our assurance testing. We are moving to expand our staff testing, to be offering testing at each, each of our buildings weekly and began spring testing of students. And we have a plan in place for that, that we will bring forward very soon as well. And we'll continue to maintain our ongoing communication with the county about vaccination options for our staff and for the community as they come. Good news, obviously with the approval of the Johnson, Johnson vaccine and the some strategies of how the state and the county may issue some of those additional vaccines. We should, we expect some information in the very near future about that. But that is part of our upcoming plan. And we will provide a more detailed response to the questionnaire responses at our upcoming action meeting in, in two weeks. And that concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Slott. So now we move to public comment. So this is the time for community input on agenda items. Any members of public wishing to make a comment can raise your hand by using the raise hand function on Zoom or by pressing star nine on your phone. When it's your turn to speak, you're going to be prompted to unmute yourself and then you can begin to speak. Please remember to state your name, your address and municipality. And the comments are limited to three minutes. Are there any members of a public wishing to make a comment?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
So review of the minutes, minutes are there for your review. If you have any comments or questions about them, you can direct those to, to me and we can revise something if it needs to be revised before we approve them at the next meeting. And then we have the proposed school calendar for the 2021, 2022 school year there. And Dr. Taylor, I believe, is going to speak to that.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. We are proposing the academic calendar for the 2021, 2022 school year. And it reflects the type of framework that we've had in years past. The number of professional staff days, student days and 12-month staff days is consistent with what we've had over the past several years. We will be looking to begin school for our students after Labor Day. However, this year, the George holidays are adjacent to Labor Day. So the students will begin on the ninth of September, which will be the Thursday of that week. Finally, the Following the, uh, holidays for, um, Rosh Hashanah. And we will also conclude the year with our 12th grade graduation, which would be the second Monday in June, which is, uh, the date that we've become accustomed to. A question that we often receive is, are there snow days built in? And the answer is yes, we do have two traditional snow days built into the calendar. And should we need to take subsequent days, we would, uh, take those during the spring. Um, and again, if we needed to add, add more, we would be looking to the end of the school year. But another option that we may be exploring would be, uh, virtual, um, instruction days as well. Um, I believe that is all I wanted to bring to your attention, um, this evening. But again, that is for your consideration and, uh, we would look to adopt the calendar at the end of the, uh, of the month at our next activity. And with that, uh, Madam President, it ends my update.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
You're welcome.
Um, and now we move to, uh, our second public comment section. So this is the period where people can make comments about any items, um, of their concern. Um, again, when it's your time to speak, the person will unmute you and tell you that it is your time to speak. Um, you can indicate that you want to speak by hitting star nine on your phone or using the raise hand function, um, in Zoom. There is a three minute limit and, uh, please state your name, address and municipality of residence if you would like to. Are there any persons wishing to be heard?
I do not see any hands raised at this time, Madam President.
And do we have any emails to be read, Mr. Riker?
Uh, yes, we do, Madam President. I have two virtual comments. Uh, first, good evening. I want to start by thanking Dr. Everslag and the school board for working so hard to keep our children and teachers safe throughout this pandemic. I have been supporting all of you quietly, but realize now I need my voice to be heard. My daughter, who is in eighth grade at Heath Valley, has excelled with the virtual program. The teachers have been amazing and supportive. That said, we have decided to let her change over to hybrid starting tomorrow. We finally decided to change it to hybrid because my daughter really wanted to try it. Dr. Everslag and the school board have stuck to the six-foot rule for the safety of our children and teachers. And the changes the school has made to ensure kids can go in person safely. The virtual and hybrid community have been paying attention, but quietly. And now I feel this could be a detriment to the safety of our kids. I was extremely pleased that the school board was holding their position on the six-foot CDC guidelines for safety. And then we received the survey. Now I'm concerned, I will have to pull my daughter from hybrid just days after changing to it. If the district moves to full five days at less than six feet, what will the additional mitigation procedures be for lunch since they do not wear masks? Will there be any other mitigation measures taken if you move to a less than six-foot approach? I'm uncomfortable with the way the questions were asked in the survey. I feel the answers could be used for or against the cause of hybrid kids. For instance, my question to question 10, if, if the only models available were five days per week onsite without the assurance of six feet of physical distancing or fully remote instruction, which would you be your preference? My answer would be fully remote. But will you take the fully remote responses as open spaces for those who want to go five days at less than six feet? Or that there may be hybrid kids that want to stay hybrid, only it's, if it's at a safe distance of six feet. Please take into consideration the many people who have been quietly watching and appreciating the safety afforded to our kids and teachers so far. I know I'm speaking for the many who want to stay hybrid. This is our choice, the safe choice. Thank you for your consideration. Amy Clevenger, McIntosh Court, Corsham. Second comment, my husband and I have two daughters in Happer Horsham, a junior and a sixth grader. We're part of, of a quiet but impassioned group who desperately want our children to return to in-person school, but it is deemed safe and appropriate. We understand that the return will need to occur at the appropriate time. Being planned well will likely need to occur in phases to allow for the adjustment of teachers and students to our new normal and will need to be monitored appropriately. We will not send our daughters back to in-person school unless the CDC guidelines for six feet of separation are maintained. We want to acknowledge our support of the superintendent and the difficult job he and his staff face right now. We appreciate the hard work, concern for the students and staff and clear communication at each phase of this process. We would love our children to return to school soon, but do not want to risk their lives, ours. For those of the teachers and staff, we are grateful that you're willing to make the difficult choice to provide the absolute best and safest education during this difficult time. Our girl, our girls are with us all day and we work our jobs as they complete their schoolwork. We're continually impressed by the teachers and their ability to provide engaging classes and positive and supportive learning environment. Our daughters are thriving. One daughter has an IEP and she continues to succeed and is doing amazingly well with this format. The other has never met her teacher or been in to her school, but she is doing well and build a nice relationship with her teachers and classmates. Kristen Demshock and Brian Barth, parents to Happer Horsham students 11 and 17. That concludes the virtual comments.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. Um, are there any additional comments from any board members or Dr. Everslag?
I would just say, Madam President, if I may, that, um, thank you for those that submitted the, 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 the comments and questions. Um, we do believe that the survey results will allow us to, um, analyze and determine, um, the perceptions of of our different stakeholders so that we will be able to break down the, the responses and preferences from those who are currently fully virtual and currently hybrid. And those who maybe, uh, if that situation were to, uh, be presented, who would be forced to make a choice of, uh, something that they would not, would they, would they not want either choice if I said that well enough? Um, and, and as I, as I've expressed before in this venue, I am concerned about that, uh, the population who would be forced to choose between an option that, um, that, um, was, was neither safe for, they deemed as safe nor they deemed as educationally valuable. So, um, that, that perspect- perspective i- is, is valued. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hey, if not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I can round, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
This is DJ Schultz and I second that.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.